The first six teams in the conference are assured of a playoff spot. The Clippers, six and one in their last seven games, are at Brooklyn Friday night. Magic Johnson, a part owner of the Dodgers, has yet to confirm if he'll join the team for their White House visit on April seventh. President Trump invited the Dodgers to the White House to celebrate their World Series championship last season. No debates, no speculation, just the info you need. That's your KBLA Sports Minute. I'm Ray Richardson on KBLA Talk 1580.
KBLA Talk 1580 is pleased to announce it like George and Wheezy. Earlier this year, we were named a semifinalist for the American Climate Leadership Awards 2025. Wait for it, wait for it. KBLA Talk 1580 was recently selected as one of 10 finalists being considered for this prestigious award. Hundreds of organizations, institutions, and even cities were nominated in this election process, but KBLA Talk 1580 has made it to the finals. You're invited to watch live on Wednesday, April 16th at 10:00 AM Pacific, 1:00 PM Eastern, 12:00 PM Central, as EcoAmerica announces the winner and the runner up, awarding over $200,000 in prize money. To watch live, just go to ecoamerica.org to register and attend the online ceremony. That's ecoamerica.org. Don't miss the presentation of the American Climate Leadership Awards 2025, Wednesday, April 16th, and wish us luck. Caring about the climate, caring about the community, changing the conversation. We're KBLA Talk 1580, and we've got your black.
KBLA Talk 1580, good morning and God bless. I'm Dominique De Prima. This show is called First Things First, and my very first thing today and every day, giving thanks, giving praises and asking for blessings from the most high, asking for the blessings of the ancestors and the elders. And let's go. Happy Thursday. We've got a lot to talk about, a lot to do, much fellowship to make, much rabble to rouse. So this is how we do it on a Thursday. Hour one, we look national. Hour two, we go, no, hour one, we look local. Hello, distraction. Hour two, we go national, international and beyond. And in the third hour, we do a deep dive with a hot topic person of interest. And today we are on task, on point with all of that. Looking forward to the conversation in hour three with State Senator Sasha Perez, who is a freshman lawmaker. She got sworn in and then maybe less than a month later, actually about a week later, even less, the fires devastated her region. She is over Altadena. So we'll be really interested to have a conversation with her. She also happens to be a millennial who has stepped up to the plate in the lawmaking space. So that should be a good conversation. Hour two, phone lines are open. Well, you know, they're always open, but they're extra, extra open, freestyle phones, me, you and me and you. And I really want to talk about those twin young men that have gone missing, that well, not gone missing. They were found dead and we haven't had a chance to do a deep dive into that, but I do want to talk about it. Got some other, keeping up with the Los Locos de Washington DC, but I don't want my whole life or your whole life to be that. So we'll do a little of that, but not only that. And I am, as usual, excited to welcome in a guest for hour one. She is an award winning Gen X journalist, a political strategist, and actually an elected delegate to the LA County Democratic Party. My friend and colleague, also she denies it, but it's true. She's a fashion icon, Jasmine Canick. Good morning.
You're so funny. Good morning, Dominique. Good morning, Miles. I know Miles was like, do you need a minute? Are you awake?
He might've said the same thing to me today, but.
So I'm awake, Miles. Good morning, KBLA family.
No doubt. Yeah, well, you know, Miles doesn't have any sympathy because he probably already hit the gym this morning before he even got here, which is crazy, but.
That is.
But, um, well, let's start off saying her name. I mean, we may as well start off saying her name, Waquisha Wilson. Her angelversary is today, right Jasmine?
Nine years, nine years. And for folks who don't, you know, who don't know about Waquisha, she was the young lady. I think she was 36 years old and she was arrested by LAPD and put into the Metropolitan Jail over on First and Los Angeles, and she died. And her family wasn't notified. It wasn't until she didn't show up for court. And her mother went to court and sat there. No one said anything to her. And finally, after Ms. Hines, Ms. Lisa Hines called to find out what was going on and where her daughter was. They told her to call the coroner's office. And every time I say that, I have to pause because that is just so incredibly cruel. Just, just really, really cruel. And she found out that her daughter had died while in custody. And there was a whole bunch of stuff that happened after that, you know, videos disappearing. You know, there was a situation with the, the person who was one of the jailers there, who I believe was suspended or fired. I can't, it was nine years ago. I can't remember exactly what happened there, but there was some discipline that happened there. There was also a lawsuit that happened that the city ended up paying out. When I think of Waquisha, I think of Matrice, right? I think.
Matrice Richardson, yeah.
Matrice Richardson, I think of, you know, black women who have been in custody here in LA County who didn't come out of custody, right? Or, you know, something really bad happened to them and, you know, Ms. Hines and her sister, Waquisha's aunt, Sheila Hines, you know, they had spent the last nine years fighting and advocating and pushing. I remember at that time, Charlie Beck was the chief of police and going down to those meetings of the police commission and really pushing and challenging them along, you know, they worked really closely with Black Lives Matter Los Angeles to really challenge the city, challenge the police commission, to hold folks accountable. And I will never forget Waquisha because again, nine years ago, this is an odd year for me with Easter because Easter's in April, like April 20th, I think, you know, it's not, for me, it seems, I'm like, wow, Easter's really, really late in the year this year, right? So this was Easter Sunday, nine years ago when this happened, right? So it was, you know, we're almost a little, a little, you know, a month or so away, a little less than a month or so away from Easter still for 2025. But, but back in 20, I think it was 2014, it was Easter Sunday, which was another heartbreak on top of a heartbreak, right? That this would happen on, on Easter. And so, yeah, we do remember Waquisha. You know, I know I, I talk about this a lot and I'm sure this is something you think about too, Dominique, is that I have met so many people in this city that I would never have met had it not been for a tragedy, right? I did not know Ms. Hines. I did not know Sheila, her, Waquisha's aunt, but I have been rocking and rolling with them ever since, right? We, our friendship, you know, grew out of tragedy, right? But there was also good that came out of it, just in terms of, you know, I think there's going to be a big announcement tomorrow around like new laws that are being carried to help families not have to experience this in the, in the future, which is similar to what happened with Matrice, right? That we had to have Matrice's law, we had to have, you know, these different laws around the country to help ensure that other families don't go through certain things. So there has been things, good things that have come out of, you know, us all coming together and crossing paths in the city. But I, I can never forget that it always starts right at the intersection of a tragedy. Something happened, we all come together to help, to be there and to support. And, but Ms. Hines is like a mother to me and she is one of the people who I look up to in this city. And I, I, I think that she really fought and continues to fight on behalf of her daughter. And it's, it's really inspiring. And yeah, we remember Waquisha today.
Yeah, absolutely. So thank you for sharing that because I know you were very involved and you were actually in, well, you were in the city council the day that Ms. Hines confronted Chief Beck, weren't you? Were you there that day?
I was sitting right there at that police commission meeting. I sure was. You know, we go to these things, Dominique, you know, because this was back when I was covering the police department, right? And, and all the shenanigans going on under Chief Beck. You never know what's going to happen when you show up to a meeting, right? Which is actually a good segue into our next topic, but you never know. And I was there the day that Ms. Hines, let's just say brought Waquisha in the, into the commission meeting with her.
Pretty much literally, we talked about it. If you didn't, if you missed that podcast, Ms. Sheila Hines was on the show not too long ago. You can find it wherever you get your podcasts for free, or you could look it up on our YouTube page, which is KBLA 1580 on youtube.com. And by the way, we're streaming there right now and there's a robust conversation happening in the comments as usual. And I thank you to our KBLA delegation that shows up in the comments and provides me with feedback in real time every day. I'm so excited to have Jasmine Canick on. When we come forward, we're going to talk about, well, I started off the week with, and certainly Jasmine Canick has given me some new insight on it, maybe given all of us some new insight on it, the proposed ban on a couple of words inside the LA City Council meetings. It's be, it's become a big topic of conversation, not just here, but nationally. But this is how I started off the week. Is it an impingement on freedom of speech? Well, Jasmine has a thing or two to say about that. They're trying to ban the N word and the C word, rhymes with punt. We'll talk about that when we come forward on KBLA Talk 1580.
She's reclaiming her time on KBLA Talk 1580. More First Things First with Dominique De Prima when we come forward.
The revolution will not be televised.
What's up? It is Killer Mike, also known as Michael Render, and I'm encouraging you to listen to more not less of Truth Time with Dr. Cornell West and Senator Nina Turner on KBLA Talk 1580.
For a limited time at Verizon, you can get our best price ever. That's four lines on unlimited welcome for just $25 a line per month with auto pay plus taxes and fees. You'll also get the new iPhone 16 Pro, four of them for the entire family. When you trade in up to four phones from our top brands, that's a new phone for everyone, only on the network you can count on. Verizon, visit a store today. 20 monthly promo credits supplied over 36 months with a new line on unlimited welcome. In times of congestion, unlimited 5G and 4G LTE may be temporarily slower than other traffic. Domestic data roaming at 2G speeds. Additional terms apply for phone offer. See Verizon.com for details.
The new day is on the horizon.
Behind every great moment in history, there's a woman whose story went untold. This March, KBLA Talk 1580 celebrates the trailblazers who changed our world. From Rosa Parks to Constance Baker Motley, from Catherine Johnson to Kamala Harris, these are the voices that broke barriers, challenged limits and reshaped America. Join us all month long as we honor the women who dared to dream, fight and lead. KBLA Talk 1580, amplifying women's stories that inspire generations.
Testing, testing.
We are live from Chick-fil-A.
This is Grant.
And this is Laura.
And a little thing we love about the Chick-fil-A Smokehouse Barbecue Bacon Sandwich is that sweet bun.
And that chicken fillet was perfectly crispy and soft at the same time.
And that Smokehouse Barbecue Sauce, it's a lot of fun. And the brown sugar bacon definitely had a little bit more pizzazz. Also the mac, one of the all time greats. Man, I'm getting hungry.
Order the Smokehouse Barbecue Bacon Sandwich and our Coca-Cola on the Chick-fil-A app for a limited time. Real guests paid for their testimonials.
If you're living with dry age-related macular degeneration or dry AMD, you may be at risk for developing geographic atrophy or GA. GA can be unpredictable and progress rapidly, leading to irreversible vision loss. Now there's something you can do to.
Slow it down to get it going slower.
Izervay is proven to slow GA progression.
Izervay gets GA going slower.
Izervay or Avacincated Pagel is a prescription eye injection used to treat GA. Don't take it if you have an infection or active swelling in or around your eye. Izervay can cause eye infection, retinal detachment, or increased risk of wet AMD. Izervay may temporarily increase eye pressure. Your vision may be impaired after an eye injection or exam. Don't delay. Ask your doctor about Izervay today.
Izervay gets GA going slower.
Visit izervay.com. That's I Z E R V A Y dot com.
Your ancestors' favorite radio station. Radio station. And your favorite morning show host. Let's get back to Dominique De Prima right now.
LA City Council taking the first steps to ban offensive language from audience members during meetings.
And I think Monica should get a copy of it too. And by the way, where is Mr. Price? Is he going to prison? So long, nigger.
Next speaker, please.
Seven council members signed a proposal on Friday to prohibit two words and remove people who use them. More words may be added to this list in the future.
Yep, that sets the stage pretty much for what I was teeing up. Jasmine Canick is with me and you actually created a whole, well, shall we say medley of some of the language that you heard in the city council. I don't know if we can play that or not.
I don't think we can play it. It's, isn't that ironic that we cannot play it, right? But you can be forced to sit and listen to it, right? Like, because it happened in real life. It, it, for folks who don't know, shout out to the LA City View 35 crew. You know, the city of LA does have its own 24 hour channel, okay? And, you know, so on channel 35, it gets played. It's streaming live, you know, on the city clerks. For folks who don't know, if you can't go to a city council meeting, you could certainly watch it live on YouTube or watch it later. So it's on social media, unedited, right? It's on TV, unedited. So I just, I just find some irony in that and, and just, you know, for folks who are, are, you know, trying to wrap their brains around what they just heard, that is nothing. That is the tip of the iceberg in terms of the language that is used at least three times a week in city council meetings. I know that some of these folks also show up to commission meetings and committee meetings, but you know, it's just absolutely ridiculous.
I mean, you described a committee meeting, I believe it was you that described a committee meeting where they were calling the mayor the N word and the C word, just hurling these insults at people. Here's the thing, you know, and I started off the week comparing, okay, the White House has listed a long, long list of words that you can't say anymore if you're in government. And it includes women and females. So I don't know how they're going to actually have, actually have conversations if you can't say women. But it's, it's so weird because that obviously is representing the, the far right, right? The authoritarian impulse. And then we have the LA City Council and Marquise Harris-Dawson, who I've always considered a progressive, to be trying to ban the N word and the C word in these council meetings. And there's a fear, I think, on the, on the part of activists, that this is some kind of prelude to even more repression of activists. The cops are always taking people out who are speaking their mind about usually the police department, but other things as well. And so there's, I think there's a concern that this is the beginning of some kind of crackdown on dissent and not just on disrespect.
This is definitely a tricky argument to have. You know, I, when I was preparing to come on this morning, which for me means making coffee, I remember thinking to myself, have I ever felt in all the years that I've been alive that I just personally as Jasmine Canick have free speech? And I was like, no, I don't. Because I know there are certain things that I cannot say. There are things that I, I cannot say just because, you know, I know that you can't yell fire in a crowded theater. There are things that I know that I cannot say, even though I may be thinking it in my head just because, you know, it's just, it's just not right. I, look, I feel really bad for people. Look, I, let me, let me start here because sometimes people like, you know, need to understand, well, how does she know so much or why is her opinion matter? First of all, my opinion matters because I'm a black person in the city of LA. And everybody who's black, you know, should be invested in this conversation and, and the use of the N word in city council meetings. But it particularly hurts people who are staffers. Shout out to the staffers, you know, I used to work for Herb. I've sat through my fair share of council meetings.
Herb Wesson, former council president.
Herb Wesson. Yes. Coffee still kicking in, her, you know, council meetings, committee meetings. It hurts staff. It hurts the kids sitting there who came there to get an award that day or to be recognized. People who, who, who are sitting there and, and have to, they're like, I've seen it. Like people are like, did he just say that? Did, did that just happen? Because they had no idea, right? When I first posted this, after Council President Harris-Dawson initiated this proposal, and I was like, just so happy. I was like, finally, we're doing something, right? Because this is ridiculous. People were like, this is fake. This is a voiceover. You know, this can't be real. I'm like, this is absolutely real. Know your zip code. You know what's going on on TNT, but you don't know what's going on in 90012, which is the zip code for City Hall. But my point is you should know what's going on in your local government as well. And this has been going on for years. If I recall correctly, when Herb Wesson was in office, I think there was an incident went in news. I know that he was calling the N word many, many times. Just recently, I was looking through public comments and saw how Council Member Heather Hott was being attacked. And let me be clear, people, it is not just the N word. It is the C word. It is the F word. And not that F word, you know, the slur against queer folks, that F word. It is, it is language that is anti-Semitic, but not quite as bad, in my opinion, as the, you know, like they go just so far when, when they talk about Jewish people in city council, but not as far as they go when they talk about us and use the N word. And, you know, to me, I feel like everybody needs city, city paid for therapy after having to sit through a city council meeting.
Let me tell you something. I'm glad I, you know, I had considered running at one point. I would have to, I'm sorry, you're not going to sit up there and call me the N word and call me all kinds of Bs. Those are fighting words. I can't listen to that day in and day out. I'm going to need a lawyer.
You're going to need a lawyer, you're going to need hazard pay, you're going to need therapy. It is, it is so dehumanizing. And, and to me, for me, we're not protecting free speech. What we're doing is protecting hate speech. And so, you know, people wonder why there are those of us who say that this city is anti-black. Anytime you can go to city council or our government and sit up there and call people the N word and the B word, combination of the both, and everything but a child of God in public. And let me just also say this, they know when and where to do it. They don't do it in the hood. They do it when there's security around. They do it in face.
Right, so they ain't crazy, they're just loud and racist.
They're not that crazy.
And misogynist, right?
Very misogynist.
And you see, because you're in the YouTube chat, as am I, you see James from the Conversation Rise saying, I don't like it, but the First Amendment is fundamental to our work. Okay, but you don't get to, just like Jasmine said, you don't get to yell fire in a crowded theater, James, you not arguing about that. James will be on Monday, so we can probably box about that then. I do believe in protecting the First Amendment, but the fact that, and we know this is society wide because we've talked about this before, Jasmine, for some reason, the N word has way more latitude than other racial slurs, right?
Absolutely. The, it is, and part of that, I, you know, and this is a whole conversation for another day, but you know, we have embraced the N word in this country through music, through.
And I'm not going to be a hypocrite, Jasmine. I say it, right? And I'll say, not on the air, I don't think. But, but, but I, but I think words have context. I don't think there's bad words and good words. Words have context. If you call me the B word, you'd be like, B what? I wouldn't be offended, right? If some dude said it, that's a problem. So I, I think words have context, but that's another conversation for another day. I just want to know, why can't we find another basis? And perhaps the city council president has because he said he met with counsel and they felt like, you know, the, the lawyers for the city, well, city attorney, I guess.
Our city attorney's office, our illustrious city attorney's office. And I talked about that yesterday, actually, because here's the thing, the city council can make all the proposals that they want to, but at the end of the day, it has to go through the city attorney's office for legal clearance, right? And my whole argument is let's, I need my city attorney to tap into some of that creative genius that they use when they want to find loopholes and workarounds and all the other things, right? For development deals and all the other things that happen in the city to help us figure out how we can stop people from weaponizing slurs at public meetings. You want people to come to city council. You want your residents to be engaged in what's going on in their city. But we don't even feel comfortable coming down there because we have to sit through the N word, the B word, the C word, the F word.
And to me, it's, it's not just a word. Man Ray is in the chat saying, why is anyone getting upset over the N word in 2025? Because if a white person, and let us be clear, these folks are mostly white people, are, is able to come in my face at my job and call me the N word all day, that's not just a word. That's you attacking me personally on the basis of a protected aspect of my persona. We don't know how much longer it'll be protected. We only have 20 seconds till news, traffic and sports here. We're going to address this on the other side. Why isn't this a hate crime? Why are we addressing it as an issue of censorship of words? Why are we not addressing it as a hate crime? That's misogyny, that's anti-blackness, racism, that is homophobia, that's more than a word. I want to get Jasmine's take and yours as well when we come forward on KBLA Talk 1580.
More First Things First with Dominique De Prima when we come forward.
I'm Bree Wood with Four Things You Should Know with BIN News. A measure banning DEI initiatives at Ohio Public Colleges is close to becoming law. The Senate passed Senate Bill One, which also bans faculty strikes. It's now awaiting Governor DeWine's signature with the Ohio Legislative Black Caucus urging a veto. President Trump may extend the TikTok ban deadline and reduce tariffs if China approves a US brokered deal. TikTok's fate is uncertain as ByteDance must sell to a non-Chinese buyer or face a ban. Adrick Wilson, a 47-year-old black man from Texas, was released after spending 18 years in Harris County Jail without a trial. He was charged with murder and aggravated assault in 2006. There were disputes over his mental competency, which he called a stall tactic. And a partial solar eclipse will be visible early Saturday from Washington DC to eastern Canada with the best view in Maine. It will end around 7:00 AM. Viewers should wear protective glasses. Get BIN News on demand 24/7 on the iHeartRadio app.
Would you like your community to be recognized as a beautiful and clean place to live? Help the place you love become a designated clean California community. Take the pledge today at cleanca.com. Zero litter is the goal.
This is the KBLA Sports Minute with Ray Richardson.
It was a good night on the road for both of LA's NBA teams. LeBron tipped in a missed shot by Luka Doncic at the buzzer to lift the Lakers to a 120 to 119 win at Indiana. The win snapped the Lakers' three-game losing streak. Doncic led the Lakers with 34 points and seven assists. The Lakers are at Chicago tonight. The Clippers. and seven assists. The Lakers are at Chicago tonight. The Clippers rolled into Madison Square Garden in New York City and beat the Knicks 126 to 113. James Harden had 29 points and six assists. Kawhi Leonard dropped 27 points. The wind moved the Clippers into a tie for sixth place with Golden State. The first six teams in the conference are assured of a playoff spot. The Clippers, six and one in their last seven games, are at Brooklyn Friday night. Magic Johnson, a part owner of the Dodgers, has yet to confirm if he'll join the team for their White House visit on April 7. President Trump invited the Dodgers to the White House to celebrate their World Series championship last season. No debates, no speculation, just the info you need. That's your KBLA Sports Minute. I'm Ray Richardson on KBLA Talk 1580.
I'm Kareem Abdul-Jabbar. I learned about atrial fibrillation the hard way. My symptoms would come and go. Shortness of breath, fatigue. I kept going. Then I got so lightheaded, I couldn't. My doctor said I have AFib, so I'm about five times more likely to have a stroke. Other symptoms, irregular heartbeat, heart racing, chest pain can come and go, but the risk of stroke stays. If you have symptoms, tell a doctor. Visit no timetowait.com.
Sponsored by Bristol-Myers Squibb and Pfizer.
Wesley Financial Group is not a law firm.
Are you a victim of the timeshare trap and think there's no way out? I'm Chuck McDowell, founder of Wesley Financial Group, the original timeshare cancellation expert. And I'm here to tell you that there is a way out. All you need to do is give my office a call. I will send you a timeshare exit information kit absolutely free, explaining how the timeshare industry works and your options for cancellation.
Call Wesley now for your free info kit. Call 800-335-2299. That's 800-335-2299.
The revolution will not be televised.
What's up? It is Killer Mike, also known as Michael Render, and I'm encouraging you to listen to more, not less of Truth Time with Dr. Cornell West and Senator Nina Turner on KBLA Talk 1580.
It's tax season and at LifeLock, we know you're tired of numbers, but this one you need to hear. 16.5 billion. That's how much money in refunds the IRS flagged for possible identity fraud last year. Now, here's a good number. 100 million. That's how many data points LifeLock monitors every second. If your identity is stolen, we'll fix it guaranteed. Oh, one last number. Save up to 40% your first year with promo code NEWS. Visit lifelock.com for the threats you can't control. Terms apply.
Wesley Financial Group is not a law firm. Are you a victim of the timeshare trap and think there's no way out? I'm Chuck McDowell, founder of Wesley Financial Group, the original timeshare cancellation expert. And I'm here to tell you that there is a way out. All you need to do is give my office a call. I will send you a timeshare exit information kit absolutely free, explaining how the timeshare industry works and your options for cancellation.
Call Wesley now for your free info kit. Call 800-335-2299. That's 800-335-2299.
Stories are power. The Black Land Loss Narrative Archive Project is an effort to collect, preserve, and amplify stories of black land loss. It will form an invaluable resource for scholars, authors, historians, educators, storytellers, policymakers, and change agents who wrestle with issues of restitution, reparations, racial inequality in homeownership, and the racial wealth gap. Through documenting stories of black land loss, the archive will help demonstrate the magnitude of what black families have lost and will continue the national dialogue to encourage paths to restitution, rebuilding, and healing. Support the Black Land Loss Narrative Archive Project by visiting wwwblacklandloss.org or by donating at wwwblacklandloss.org/donate. Spread the word to inspire awareness, activism, leadership, and change. And join us in making a lasting impact. This is a community call to action from KBLA Talk 1580. We've got your black, 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 black. Thanks for waking up with Dominique De Prima on KBLA Talk 1580.
And I am so happy to have you here with us. Jasmine Kanek is in the convo also. 800-920-1580 if you want to weigh in. 800-920-1580. So this is a story, when you hear it on paper, it sounds like the council's being, you know, they're censoring or they're being petty. Um, you know, James is in here talking smack, saying my arm's too short to box with him on this. My arm's not too short to box with you on nothing, James. But it's not about boxing. It's about, what do we do? Do, do you think it's okay, James or anyone? Um, do you think it's okay to allow our electeds to be pummeled, to be attacked? And, and to your point, Jasmine, if I'm bringing my 90-year-old mom or we're honoring, you know, some veteran activists or some veteran, you know, artists and they have to sit through that, that's the representation of our city. I think when you don't actually hear it or see it, it sounds like they're being wussies. But when you see it, it's like this honor, onerous kind of badgering. It's like harassment. It feels, and I believe that lesser attacks are reported to the LA county and city, human relations commissions, and the LA Civil Rights Department, which also reviews hate crimes, as well as the police for that matter. If I'm walking down the street and someone calls me, you know, the C word, the N word, and yells at me, I could report that as a hate crime, right?
Um, you, you can, especially if it made you feel like your life was in danger, your, 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 you know, someone was going to harm you in some sort of way. Um, you absolutely could. And I don't think enough of us, uh, you know, do that. But I want to circle back to something you said at the top of the segment, which is about the council members. I know that council members have signed up to serve the public because that's what elected officials are. They are public servants, right? And I get that, but no one signs up to be called the N word on a daily basis. No one signs up to be called the B word or the C word or the F word. That, that, that just isn't part of the job description. So, and, and in a lot of ways, I don't want to make it just about the council members, because like I said, it hits the staff, it hits the audience, it hits the folks watching at home. Like, it affects everyone, not just the council members. And I think for people who are trying to lean on sort of the, you know, oh, it's, it's, it's free speech, it's free speech. It's like, well, no, actually you're protecting hate speech. That's what you're protecting. You are, you are literally saying or advocating to protect hate speech. And again, in a city where we're constantly trying to get the residents to engage in their local government, to know about what's going on in their own zip code versus what they think is going on in Washington DC, having the, this type of language being used at city council meetings, commission meetings, and committee meetings, isn't exactly inviting. It doesn't exactly say to me as a resident, you know what, I, I, I want to go participate civically and, and engage civically and go down to my, my city council meeting. Who wants to sit through that? Just me putting that clip together that you talked about? Also, you know, KBLA chatroom people, I dropped the link in there. Just special for you. I put it on YouTube so y'all can watch it. Uh, because like you said, I think it hits differently when you actually hear it, you know, and see it. Um, and I, and I, there's a line that I said, uh, this week on social media, and I stand by it. And that is, if this is how we conduct democracy in LA, we need to stop cosplaying as this inclusive progressive city we claim to be. Because if people can go down there and say that, we are not the, the city that we claim to be. And I'm also going to repeat and stand by this. They know who to say that to and they know what language to use to get away with it. Because I do not believe that if they were going down there every single day and using slurs against Latinos, slurs against, um, Jewish folks, and slurs against gay folks, that I believe this would have been shut down a long time ago.
Yeah, that may well be. I mean, you look what's happening to people right now just for protesting against the Israeli actions in Palestine and they're being scooped up by ICE and fired from their jobs and having their degrees revoked, which is ridiculous because you already did the work. I believe that's true. I, I can't imagine, um, you, you know, imagine some radical black group going down there and, and yelling just slurs for white people. That would have been shut down. I don't, I just don't see that happening. Or going up there every day and going F the police. Let's see how long that lasts.
Well, and, and let me just say this. I can remember, if I remember correctly, that when Nipsey Hussle was honored, this was after he was, he was murdered, right? And I think it was, um, council president Harris Dawson. If I, I'm, I'm trying to remember all the details, but there was a, a day that we were all in city council. Um, Sam, his brother, uh, other family members were there. We were, um, recognizing Nipsey for his, uh, commitment to the city and the work that he had done. And those people, the main people that usually do this, and there are quite a few. I know we, we tend to like hone in on Herman and, and, and Wayne and some of the, the more outlandish ones, but there are other people who come down and do it. But those folks sat there and moms was the worst. Now, maybe it was because we was all in city council that day and they knew that that crew, if they would have said that, they would, they probably wouldn't have made it home that day, but they didn't do it that day. And somebody reminded me of that on social media. They were like, do you remember that? And I was like, oh yeah, that's right. They, they were kind of quiet that day. I recall them getting up there, calling people the N word with the hard ER at the end, that day in city council. So, I mean, I think they used the word intentionally. I think they know because it's a tricky area. I also do strongly believe that folks want a payday from the city, which is a payday from the taxpayers, from the city, from us. Um, you know, we did pay Michael Hunt $215,000. I think back in 2014, the KKK, the black man who wore the KKK costume down to, to, um, a city council meeting. I think there are folks who want to push the limit as far as they can and then slap a lawsuit against the city to say that their rights were, were infringed upon and then have a settle.
Man Ray in the chat says, do I get to punch the black guy that calls me that? Um, well, I would need to know more about you.
That's your choice.
And the black guy, and that's your choice, right? And you get to deal with. But he's saying it's not a hate crime unless the person puts their hands on you. I'm not sure that's true. I think if they're following me and, and it's harassment, um, it, it's, I don't think that the, the bar for hate crime is strictly someone putting hands on, but I could be wrong about that.
Hate speech is a weapon. Hate speech is a weapon. And I don't know why people confuse the two. The first amendment wasn't designed to give people a platform to dehumanize others under the guise of discourse. You can have opinions without using slurs. You can challenge power, because people want to go down to city council and yell about, you know, the trees not being cut or the cars with the roads.
So yell. You don't have to say that. So just yell.
You don't have to call them the C word. You don't have to make fun of their name. Like, uh, like one of the people this week made fun of council member Nifia Rahman's, um, you know, ethnicity and race and, and, and call, through her, her last name, which is Rahman. I, I mean, you don't have to do all of those things. You, you really don't.
He has a good point too, though, Man Ray. He says the people showing up to those meetings are gadflies who need to get a life. And, but that, that may be, but they're ruining the experience for everybody. And I feel like, and he's also got a good point, who drives to downtown LA pays for parking just to use the N word. That's someone who needs to get a life. I agree. But, um,
But it's in the public record. It's being beamed out on television. It's being beamed out on, on social media. And again, the gadflies? Yes. We, you know, every city has its gadflies. Trust me. I've been to many council meetings outside of the city of LA. But this language isn't always used and it's not only just the gadflies. And again, if the gadflies can get away with it, what is stopping other folks from coming down there and doing it? So again, I just, I, you know, it's a conversation that we need to have. We're going to continue to have it. I'm very happy that the city council is making, um, some moves on this. But I want to hear from the city attorney. I want to know, we have a city attorney that feels that this is also hate speech, that is also, like I said, willing to do some legal gymnastics at the Olympic level to find out ways in which to work around figuring out how we can, to, to stop this. And I think for me, it starts with the city attorney because that's where we get into the law. That's where we get into the legality of what we can and what we cannot do. And I just need to see some of that creative genius I've seen come out of the city attorney's office for decades, when it comes to developers, when it comes to slumlords, when it comes to all kinds of other things.
Well, uh, you know, there's your challenge. Let's, uh, let's, let's show that we're no longer Republicans and we're willing to go the extra mile to protect our colleagues, um, women, gay, colleagues of color, and most particularly to protect our colleagues, really bosses against anti-blackness. 800-920-1580 if you got an opinion, uh, or you just want to share. We would love to talk with you. We always do. Jasmine Kanek's here with me. I'm Dominique De Prima for KBLA Talk 1580.
Say the quiet part out loud. KBLA Talk 1580.
Looking for a purposeful and passionate way to make a difference in your community? Volunteer with our senior Medicare Patrol and help prevent Medicare fraud. SMP volunteers work in their community, educating peers about healthcare fraud and how to prevent and detect it. Free training starts soon. Check us out online or at an SMP open house near you. We're on a mission to stop fraud. Join our team. You make a difference. Visit Protect yourself from Medicare card scams. Scammers may call, email, or even knock on your door claiming they need your Medicare info, asking for money or threatening to cancel your benefits. Don't fall for it. It's a scam. Remember, Medicare doesn't need to verify your information. They already have it. Medicare won't charge you for a new card and will never threaten to cancel benefits. Check your Medicare statements for suspicious charges and report scams to the California Senior Medicare Patrol at 1-855-613-7080. We're here to help.
The new day is on the horizon. Behind every great moment in history, there's a woman whose story went untold. This March on KBLA Talk 1580, we're bringing those hidden narratives to light. Hear extraordinary stories of women who transformed science, politics, arts, and community. Women you've never heard of, but should know. Celebrating Women's History Month on KBLA Talk 1580, where every story matters.
KBLA Talk 1580. We've got a lot to talk about.
KBLA Talk 1580, connecting you with services and solutions. The Autopsy Initiative provides a second autopsy free of charge for victims' families who have lost their loved ones due to a police-related death. The services offered through the initiative include the completion of a second autopsy, disclosure of preliminary findings, and a final autopsy report. A police-related death is when an individual is harmed by police officers using deadly force, which results in an individual's death. Police-related death includes in custody deaths, including those that arise during contact with law enforcement officers during arrest, pursuit, booking, transport, or incarceration. The Autopsy Initiative has a team of board-certified pathologists on call. An autopsy request may be completed by anyone with a close relationship with the victim, which may include the victim's spouse, partner, relative, close friend, or lawyer. To request a free second autopsy for a victim of police violence, please visit knowyourrightscamp.com. That's knowyourrightscamp.com. Then click on autopsy, then click on request. At KBLA, we believe in justice for victims of police violence. We say their names and we don't black down. This is a community call to action from KBLA Talk 1580.
Broadcasting live from Lower Park, USA. Welcome back to your home for Unapologetically Progressive Radio, KBLA Talk 1580.
I want to shine a little light on, uh, the family of Brandon Boyd is asking that folks to show up to the Long Beach Police Oversight Commission meeting tomorrow to try to hell, hold the, um, Long Beach Police Department accountable for the death of Brandon Boyd, who was killed on the steps of his own church, uh, late last year. That's at 5 o'clock today at City Hall 411 Ocean Boulevard, 5:00 PM, City Hall 411 Ocean Boulevard. If you can make it, if you want more information, you can go on Instagram to BLMLBC for Black Lives Matter Long Beach. Um, and also want to remind you, uh, James just texted me. Thank you for that reminder, James Farr, um, that Monday is the last day to file for FEMA if you were impacted by the fires. So they've extended the deadline. You can go on, online to fema.gov, um, and you only have till Monday to do it. And as, um, Danny Bakewell Jr. pointed out on the show, even if you don't, you're not sure if you need anything yet, you need to register. Because if six months down the line, you're still struggling for housing and you need FEMA help or whatever, you will not be eligible if you did not register now. Um, you won't be able to go back and say, oh, well, I was impacted. No, you have to be part of the group that has been identified as being impacted by the fires in the initial phase, which is now. So get it done. So get it done by Monday, fema.gov. Um, yeah, just wanted to make sure to get those two things in. Jas, of course, if you've got something to say about either of them, I'm always interested in your opinion. Jasmine Koenig is with me. We were talking about LA City Council, but I wanted to get those couple of announcements in. What happens next with this? I know, you know, that you were calling for the city attorney to do something. Seven council members are saying they want to support it, but that's far from the majority. So what happens next?
You know, what should happen next is folks who are listening to this, you know, you should, you know, pop online, do what the internet does best, do some research. Um, you know, you should hear, hear it for yourself. I can't tell you how many comments I got from folks that were like, this isn't real, this is fake, because this is the age that we live in today, right? Where, you know, fake news does pass off as, as legitimate news. But no, this is actually real. And you can find it on my Instagram reels, but you can also just go to the LA City Clerk's website. Now, the problem with that is you just have to scroll through, you know, a three-hour, four-hour meeting to get to, you know, you need to fast-forward a public comment to get to, uh, you know, what you, you need to hear, whereas if you go to my Insta, at least I kind of edited just in the terms of pulling back those parts out. But I think folks need to hear it for themselves. I think they need to reach out to their council member and their mayor. Um, and I think you don't have to live in the city of LA to have a thought on this. I think that if you think this is wrong, um, that you, even if you don't live in the city of LA proper, you should reach out. I think that's, that's part of the process, is that the council members and the mayor need to know that the residents want to see some changes made here. People actually could not believe that this was legitimate, that this was real, that people were allowed to walk down there and, and speak like that. I think another really strong argument, at least one that I'm going to continue to use, is that, look, if you want to continue to engage, you meaning our city government, want to continue engaging residents, you want us to become more involved with what's going on in our city, um, this is the kind of thing that hinders that, that stops folks from wanting to come down there and participate and to show up, because nobody wants to sit through that. Nobody wants to have those kind of words being said in their presence, especially in the way that they're said. I mean, I, there is so much power in looking at those videos and just hearing how they're saying it. It's, it's a very, um, it's a very hurtful, even for me, putting the clips together. I remember thinking, oh, I, I need, oh, I need trauma therapy just from having said to add this, because it's, it's just too, it's, it's too much. Imagine, you know, three times a week, that, you know, and that's what it used to be, you know, for, and it is like that for people who, who work for city councils, who are there for all of those meetings. So I think we need to reach out to the council, the mayor's office, the city attorney's office is definitely not off the hook either with this, because at the end of the day, it comes back down to the city attorney's office and what legal loopholes they can figure out for the city to be able to move forward with any proposal to ban words.
Okay, but before we went out of time here, like, you are a journalist, and to James' point, isn't there a side of you that worries about the free speech implications on a broader level?
No.
Why not? That was a fast, hard no. That was no period, full stop.
Well, I told you, I thought about this when I got out of this, and I was making my coffee this morning. And, you know, that's just me. Like, I know, just me as Jasmine, I cannot walk outside and say whatever I want to say for various reasons. I might get the crap knocked out of me.
Right.
I might, um, I might get, you know, I might get arrested. Um, I just know that I can't do that as, as me. Why are we allowing people to come down to... So, the argument is, we're going to protect their free speech while they, while they infringe on our, our rights to exist, our right to assemble, because again, they are keeping other people away.
Right.
They are traumatizing people. They are creating stress in people, probably health conditions and problems from the stress. Like you said, you don't think you could sit there and listen to it. Right, so your blood pressure would probably raise if you were a council member being called the N-word and the C-word and the B-word constantly, every single week, three times at least a week.
Yeah. I don't know, I mean, I started off the conversation saying I would be in jail. I may be small, but you do that all day, I'm gonna have to, I'm gonna have to clap back.
I wouldn't be there.
You'd bail me out, thank you, Jasmine.
I'd bail you out. I wouldn't leave you there.
I mean, B Bell says, people feel emboldened when their behavior goes unchecked. It needs to stop. I feel like that's why I'm feeling like we need to be creative, like you said, some kind of creative. I don't know, hate crime, I don't know if you, you know, maybe something, because it's not okay. You don't, you don't...
Well, they figure out creative ways to do so many other things in this city, so they can definitely figure out a way, I mean, these, we're talking about the masters of street parking signs, right? They can figure out how to make sure you can't park anywhere in this city legally without picking, right? There's like five signs on a pole, right?
Right, yeah.
I can go on and on with the examples. So we can definitely figure it out. We need to figure it out, because we're only three months into a four-year term of a person who has emboldened people like the ones that go, that, that use this language at city council. It's only going to get worse. It's a fight worth having. It's a fight I think residents want to see their electeds have, because this is, this is not, again, we cannot cosplay as this progressive, inclusive city. If people can go down to city council every week and use the N-word and the B-word, the C-word and the F-word, and every other phrase but a child of God, towards the staff, towards council members, and whoever they want, this, it's just not right. And, and until that changes, that's a huge reason why I continue to think this is an anti-black city.
Hmm, that's a great point. Jasmine, we got a minute here, and I know folks want to follow you, so tell them how to do so.
Just not in person.
No, yeah.
But if you want to follow me on Instagram, it's hellojasmyn, J-A-S-M-Y-N-E, and that's my name on, on X, that's who I am on Facebook, and my website is iamjasmin.com. Feel free to reach out. Thank you so much for having me on to have this discussion. And to all the folks who are listening, who are either, you know, council members, you know, our, our mayor Karen Bass, staff members down there, be strong. I know it is a weekly trauma dump, and it's a lot going on with this, but I'm really, really happy that folks are stepping up and trying to figure out a way to, to curb this.
Yeah. I mean, sometimes, you know, we have to do the common sense thing. I don't, I don't know how we get it done. I'm not for censorship. I am for First Amendment rights, but sometimes you got to do the common sense thing. The common sense thing is you don't get to go to City Hall and act a fool. That's the common sense thing. Got to, you know, you can protest, you can yell, but you don't get to just cuss and act out. You got to, you know, we got to do the common sense thing. Thanks for putting light on this issue, Jasmine. I appreciate you.
Have a great rest of your morning.
You as well. News, traffic, and sports, then more. I'm Dominique DePrima for KBLA Talk 1580.
KBLA 1580 Santa Monica.
I'm Bree Wood with Four Things You Should Know with B.I.N. News. A measure banning DEI initiatives at Ohio public colleges is close to becoming law. The Senate passed Senate Bill One, which also bans faculty strikes. It's now awaiting Governor DeWine's signature, with the Ohio Legislative Black Caucus urging a veto. President Trump may extend the TikTok ban deadline and reduce tariffs if China approves a US-brokered deal. TikTok's fate is uncertain, as ByteDance must sell to a non-Chinese buyer or face a ban. Ederick Wilson, a 47-year-old black man from Texas, was released after spending 18 years in Harris County Jail without a trial. He was charged with murder and aggravated assault in 2006. There were disputes over his mental competency, which he called a stall tactic. And a partial solar eclipse will be visible early Saturday from Washington DC to eastern Canada with the best view in Maine. It will end around 7:00 AM. Viewers should wear protective glasses. Get B.I.N. News on demand 25...
Is a beautiful and clean place to live? Help the place you love become a designated Clean California Community. Take the pledge today at CleanCA.